A board member of of the Ontario Health Coalition. And with me tonight is Angela Pio Cannon. Sorry, Angela. I practiced that beforehand, but never mind. And we would like to talk to you about the situation with healthcare and hospitals in Ontario. And the threats that that we're 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 facing. We're holding the Ontario Health Coalition is holding emergency town hall meetings across the province because we we are in a truly unprecedented crisis in our hospitals. Pediatric hospitals have been thrown at crisis in a new way, and many people have seen this on the news. They're now joining what has become beyond the normal level of crisis in our community hospitals. Such as C-4th. The situation is far from normal, despite claims otherwise it is completely unacceptable. Every large hospital in the province is running at or over one hundred percent. That means the beds that are are available are full. Patients are waiting in on stretchers and hallways and in lounges and in every available space, the very thing that the provincial government ran on in two thousand and eighteen, promising to end has now become worse than ever. Across Ontario. Ontario is an outlier. It has the fewest hospital beds per person in Canada, and Canada itself is an international outlier with very few hospital beds per capita. Compared to other developed and indeed some less developed countries. It's not normal. We had a very large downsizing of hospitals starting in the nineteen nineties. That's continued and has created this ongoing sense of crisis that we've had that that the the current government ran on in two thousand and eighteen, promising to end. And it did not. It has gotten with COVID much, much worse. In turn, the smaller hospitals have lost services as governments have forced downsizing. Local services have been cut and closed and centralized to other larger hospitals. This is a very significant worry we have about small hospitals that the services will will, to the extent that they remain, will be rationed and moved to larger centers. Patients now have to drive from one one hospital for rehabilitation across to another for another sort of care, for palliative care, a different one for birthing, another one for surgeries or tests. This is already happening at the Huron Perth Healthcare Alliance. When the the Ford government says that money won't make the difference, that is totally untrue. And today we found out that 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 the government is has actually is underspending its budget by its healthcare budget by eight hundred and fifty nine million dollars. There is money available to improve this situation, and it can be improved. When we have a lack of funding, that forces the hospitals to downsize and ration their services. This has been the policy of successive governments for decades. There was a brief respite for the last two years of the former Liberal government when they increased funding just before the election. But when the Ford government took power in two thousand and eighteen, they cut hospital funding, the funding formula to less than the rate of inflation. And we have to fund and develop our hospitals in light with of in light of inflation and in light of aging and population growth. When the pandemic hit, we had no surge capacity. Not even to deal with the annual flu. Then we had the pandemic. Then we had RSV. Then we have the flu now. Going through our hospitals. We've also dealing with with post-COVID symptoms that are sending many people to hospitals. Through the pandemic, we've we burned through any remaining resilience in the hospital. Staff have begun to leave in large and significant numbers, and we're having a staffing shortage, the likes of which we have never seen. Into the summer, in this fall, in especially hitting hard in in small and rural town hospitals, we've saw closures of emergency departments. We've also saw closures of ICUs and closure closures of beds, emergency room beds, birthing units and other services. This is unprecedented, and C-4th is one of the hardest-hit local hospitals. I'd like now turn it turned it over to our 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 other speaker tonight, Angela Pio Cannon. She she has been a registered nurse for thirty-two years. Angela has worked in surgical thoracic head, neck, urgent care, head and neck, urgent care and home hemodialysis and worked at the St. Joseph's Healthcare Hospital in Hamilton. Angela has been a member of the Ontario Nurses Association for twenty years and is currently the first vice president of the Ontario Nurses Association. Angela, welcome. We're looking forward to hearing from you. I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Doug, for the introduction. Hello, everyone. I'm here with you at the Ontario Health Coalition Coalition, and I thank you for organizing this very important town hall. As you heard, my name is Angela Pio Cannon. I am a very proud RN and the first vice president of the Ontario Nurses Association. Owner represents over sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across the province, including eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm grateful to be here with you today and to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system and why we know privatization isn't the answer. There is one thing that is very clear. Doug Ford does not have the answers, but we do. Today, the Ontario courts struck down Doug Ford's notorious Bill one twenty-four, which capped nurses and healthcare professionals' wages at one percent per year. This disrespectful wage suppression pushed out healthcare system beyond the breaking point. As nurses and healthcare workers, we have appealed to Doug Ford time and time again to repeal this unjust law, and he refused, making the crisis in our healthcare system worse as our members left the profession and droves. Sorry. With today's win in court, it's not only a huge victory for workers, but it creates an opportunity to do the right thing and invest in nurses and healthcare professionals. We know with the new Canadian Health Institute for Health Information Data that Ontario has the worst nurse-to-patient ratio in the country. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty registered nurses for every one hundred thousand patients. But in Ontario, we have just six hundred and sixty-eight for every one hundred thousand. This means just to be in the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire almost twenty-five thousand nurses immediately. What does the staffing shortage mean of this magnitude, and what does it look like in practice? It's becoming commonplace for nurses to be kept in the hospitals for hours after their shift is supposed to end because the next shift is so short-staffed, and it's not possible to safely transfer patient care. We have nurses working in units where if the complement was thirty-five nurses for the shift, only seventeen or eighteen show up. We have hospitals where there are more vacant registered nurses positions than there are RNs on on the staff. For months now, and here on Perth, our nurse, our members, the Ontario Nurses Association members and emergency departments have been calling out to their employer to hire more casual RNs to staff the emergency departments and keep their doors open. In fact, over five hundred people in your community have sent a letter to the hospital CEO asking him to listen to the nurses and hire more casual nurses, but he's just refused. As a result, the workload pressures are unrelenting, and we've had a temporary emergency department closure across the region due to staffing. You can take action right now by going to www.onadot org slash HPA to send your message to the government. We need to keep up this pressure because we need more RNs to staff these emergency rooms. Long wait times and cuts to home care. That patients are coming into emergency departments just to receive the care they should be getting at home. This is putting more strain on our overburden system. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We've always put patient care first, and even in these extremely difficult times, our members find a way to provide the care that they all know patients need and serve. This is a cost. This burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New grads are rethinking their careers and leaving only after one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure they have a work-life balance. This is a very real cost for our healthcare system as the situation worsens. And now the full picture is coming into view. The Ford government is setting the stage to use this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so much worse with the introduction of Bill one twenty-four and capped the wages of so many nurses and healthcare professionals violating our charter rights. And now we have the court decision upholding those rights and overturning this unfair law. But Ford is refusing to work with healthcare workers and to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. And now he's using this crisis, which he has created, to push privatization to our healthcare. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on world-class, universal healthcare systems. We believe the access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, non-for-profit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private health clinics will take away from public care by pulling resources and staff from the public system. As nurses, we've already seen this, as colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. And we can't blame the nurses who make that choice. The agencies let the nurses choose their own hours and can pay more because conveniently enough, they're not subject to Bill one twenty-four. But there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. It undermines undermines the nursing as a stable career and undermines your healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality care, and it hurts patients who can't afford to pay. We can't let this happen. Ontario's public health system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations and belongs to all of us. And that's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight and will continue to work hand in hand with our allies to fight the investments that are needed in public healthcare so that everyone gets the care they need and deserve. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plans in his tracks. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Angela, and we we will be opening it up for questions and comments. Just very shortly, you'll be able to raise issues and comments and questions with Angela shortly. I I just want to 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 move on, talk a little bit about some some opportunities for for C-4th committee members to work on defending their hospital and work with the Ontario Health Coalition to do that. And also want to just talk a little bit about some of the experiences that we've had in in the hospitals and in and 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 in C-4th. The hospital, the C-4th Hospital saw closures of its ER on July second, thirteenth, fourteenth, August sixteen, October thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-two. These were evening closures between five PM and seven AM. We're almost in an island here. We've got other hospitals, but they're at a significant distance from that. Having a closed hospital, especially a closed hospital when roads are bad or in winter is a very serious, serious matter. We the the ERs cannot function without adequate numbers of nurses which are just falling short in this. But we're also experiencing a shortage of other staff in the hospital, of the unit clerks, of the PSWs of the registered practical nurses are all very short within the area. Indeed, even housekeeping and food services are short. People can't take vacations over the summertime. That creates tremendous stress and strain and again leads to people leaving leaving the system. The the emergency room at Clinton also at the Clinton Hospital has been closed since on and off since two thousand and nineteen. Saint Mary's, another local hospital, also has a lot of a lot of issues. The community is worried, and they and they should be because we can't get a straight or a clear answer about what the plan is to ensure that the ongoing viability and future of a hospital. A hospital without a consistent ER operating is in danger. That is not good news to hear, I'm sure, but is the reality that we we have to face. We cannot have our our small and rural hospitals quite distant from Godrich or from Stratford or from from other areas close and not be available. We must build and secure the future of our local, small and rural hospitals. Now, Angela mentioned that part, the the actually the only type of solution that we've we've seen from the Ford government hasn't been to build up the capacity, to build up the the staff in in the hospitals and to retain the staff in the hospitals. Instead, it's been to suggest the privatization of surgeries. We know already we have significant contracting out that's grown fourfold in the in the hospitals over over the last fifteen years. We have low acuity patients that are being treated by home care agencies in hospital facilities. Not a way to deal with that will not solve the staffing problems that that exist. We've had the disaster of a super expensive privatized P-three hospitals, and now the government's plan is to set up mini hospitals to 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 do surgeries and procedures on patients. This is not a solution that works for rural, small town and northern Ontario. Those clinics naturally go to the areas where there is large populations where the most money can be made. We know through extensive research that the Ontario Health Coalition has done, calling hundreds of these clinics that across the country, that what they consistently do is that they extra bill. They want the government's money for the service, the same funding that you might receive if you were a public hospital, but they also want to find ways and aggressively pursue ways to charge extra fees for those for those services. This is a completely it's it's it doesn't. It's not good for big cities, but it's especially a problem for small and rural hospitals. They have a struggle to survive. They can't have their their staff and workforce diverted to other locations. And they can't they they can't be at the disadvantage of not having the huge numbers that large urban centers have that can create and attract the staff to to work in in these private clinics. Already, as Angela was saying, we have a tremendous problem with retaining the staff within the hospitals. Currently, the Ontario Hospital Association reported in two thousand and twenty-two that there was fourteen point nine five percent turnover of staff in the hospitals. That is completely unsustainable. People are fed up with the violence. The nurses don't don't want to face the violent patients anymore who are at their wits' end. It's not their fault. They're just they can't get the the care that they they need and they're and and things are happening. We have eight percent, according to the Ontario Hospitals Association, of vacancies. Eight percent of hospital positions are vacant right now. No wonder we have a crisis. Among nurses not intending to retire, almost one in four, according to the to CAHA, the Canadian Institute for Health Information, intend to leave their job within the next three years. Again, more recipe for disaster. We need a system that can create an attractive workforce that 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 can recruit and retain and especially retain the staff within the hospitals. There is no plan, no plan for that. Today, Angela notes that the unions did have a victory, that they have setback Bill one twenty-four. Perhaps we can we can create some a more enticing work environment. But we are a long way from that at the moment. So we are going to turn it over to 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 discussion. I we we Angela and I welcome your your comments and discussions and and points you want to raise and concerns. We want to learn about about your community and your your concerns about about the hospital and 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 the ways that you see things moving forward. But we also want you to consider ways that you might be able to work with the Ontario Health Coalition or discuss with the Ontario Health Coalition and local community members about ways that we can defend and extend the work of the Health Coalition in 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 your area and and build a a a truly rigorous defense of your public hospital. So with that, I will just, I'm just going to change the view on my computer so I can see everybody. So I can actually, if you could just raise your hand, there is a little, if you go down to, I think it's to to, I should know this by now. I've been doing this for long enough, but you can just raise your hand. If you if you go down to more and at the bottom, you can then just click reactions and then just press raise hand, and then I should be able to see it and we'll call out for questions and comments on that. And especially we're especially interested in people who are interested in in working with with or at least discussing with us ways that we can we can build and defend the the local public hospitals at C-4th and elsewhere in the area. Don't all rush at once. Angela, oh, Nancy Craig, great. Nancy, please. We're we're eagerly anticipating your comments. Go right ahead.
Hi, guys. Um, I have an idea, but it would take the community to help. It would be setting up a scholarship for nurses and doctors. That would be my idea, and I'm anxious to help you in any way I can, Doug and Angela. So just let me know what I need to do. If that's starting a petition, whatever you need, I'm here for you.
That's fabulous to hear, Nancy. Sally, Sally, we have Sally is our fantastic. He he works with the with the Ontario Health Coalition. He does a great work. Sally, can I count on you to keep track of names?
Yep.
Of volunteers? That would be fantastic. Thank you. I presume we have contact information.
We do.
Thank you, Sally. Other comments, questions?
One of the things that you can do as a public is start contacting your MPPs. Knock on their doors, call them for an appointment, go and see them, speak to them about what's going on in your community and direct them that you want your hospital to stay open. This is very, very concerning. The privatization that is being pushed through our system is really not going to be safe for anyone. I was asked last night at Clinton when I spoke, did I see the Clinton hospitals closing down? Well, no one is safe, not even the big hospitals. The government has decides to do it. They will. And they will try and push it out. They can take a big hospital, make it into a private hospital. They can privatize more and more. Right now, you have labs, for instance, in your community. The small hospitals, the rural hospitals, labs used to be in the hospital. So you'd go there to have your blood work done. Well, now you know, they're they started opening up Life Labs and Gamma Dyna Care and whatever private little lab clinics were, and they took that service out of the hospital because it wasn't generating enough money in the hospital. So these private companies are making money to do blood work, to do diagnostics. These kind of things are are just the the tip of the iceberg. Small, insidious little tidbits that they're doing. Cataract surgery, same thing into private clinics that do eye surgeries. Gastroscopy clinics, you know, the the gastroenterology clinics where you go and can have a colonoscopy or an endoscopy done. That's all being done under a private system. So I just want people to be aware of how this is being pushed through. Little by little, services are being taken out of the hospital. And they're being done in clinics all over the province, taking it away from the public system.
Trina. Trina Hollingsworth, how are you, Trina?
I'm good, Doug. Doug, thanks again for doing this and raising your awareness to the community. I did want to say there is one thing you can do too, like if you get a referral from your doctor to go to a clinic for either cataracts or scopes, ask your doctor, is this done at the hospital or is this a private clinic? Because you could ask that because sometimes you're not aware of where you're getting that referral to. And so push for push for your services to be done at the local hospitals as well. It can be helpful.
Thank you, Trina. Good idea. Other comments? Jay?
I have to what you call do some land acknowledgement to begin with.
Oh, yes, of course. My apologies.
As a second-generation indentured Indian from South Africa, I am in the land of the Mississaugas, which is part of the Treaty and Traditional Territory of the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, the Haudasheen, Confederacy of Huron-Wendat and Weyandok Nations. I recognize these people and their ancestors as people who inhabited these lands since time immemorial. So in light of the horrific discoveries made at the sites of former residential schools and the complicated history of Canada's relationship with indigenous indigenous people, I remain more committed than ever to strengthen my relationship and ours with the indigenous neighbors through action. I'm involved in many fronts. I'm a retired union representative, former rep from owner UFCW. I worked for SEIU and I was part of the first committee of the OFL healthcare committee since nineteen ninety when Bob Ray took over the government of Ontario. And I was with Sid Ryan, with Fred Upshaw, and I represented UFCW, which had homes in Ontario. And we were the health sector. I was in charge of the health sector. Now, having said that and acknowledged where I'm from and what I'm for, I am retired since two thousand two thousand and two, and I am involved with quite a few action groups. I am involved with seniors groups. I'm a member of the coalition. And I put in my two cents now and then. But what I like at this point in time, we are far from, you know, real change in government because we gave him a majority. And I say we because there's a there's a percentage of people that sat on their butts and gave him the majority that he has today, that he could do whatever he feels like. And the only way that we can do it is just like what the Superior Court did to Bill one twenty-four. We have to fight them in the courts and use the Charter to our benefit. What I'd like to see the coalition doing is listing all the processes that are being sold out or pushed out of the hospital system or the healthcare system and the LTC and everything and give it as a picture to the communities so that it's in petition form. And then the community groups or the people in the community, like I, for an example, I sign every petition that comes to me on healthcare and fight and fight and fight. I always put my email. I get emails from everybody. So having said that, that's number one, is to put the picture of whatever is happening so that the community knows what the hell's going on. And a lot of them are sitting at home and doing work via digital work. So with the Zoom, with the digital work, with the computers, we've got youngsters also, people in high school, in universities and colleges. They should know what is happening to our healthcare system, which we own. We are the owners of the healthcare system. The seventy-five billion dollars that comes from the Canada health transfer is our money. And we want the authority. We gave the government the authority to run the province's healthcare system in our benefit, not to their benefits. And touching on that, the coalition can show the structure of the hierarchy Structure of the hierarchy. Who's earning the maximum amount of money, the top heavy. The executive and the CEOs and the COOs and all the health professionals at the top. And see what happened. So with that picture gives us some ammunition when we write to the MPP. Or the, what do you call leader of the opposition or the opposition parties. We should have a picture of what we asking for, what we want to maintain and what we don't want it to be sold. So if that picture is given to the community groups, to the individuals, to people who are. As members of the coalition. So that we can use it and send it around, share it. And two platforms useful, LinkedIn and FaceTime, Facebook. Those are two strong platforms where people are accessing all the time, so if this goes in. On behalf of the coalition and I think the coalition does do some of it, but I think it has to be extensive. But having said that, there is something that needs to be done for the communities to address. Some of them don't care, they worried about the bread and butter butter issues, they want a job, they do. Three jobs, four jobs, part time jobs and they don't interest themselves in the politics of the day. And how our healthcare system is being eroded. So that is the weapon that we need. And the courts are gonna do it for us. Number one is today, what decision came down, number two is the other act where the. Challenge for seniors. The move movement of seniors from the hospitals to homes that they didn't want to go, that is going through the. Court system and I hope. It ends up in the the Superior Court or even the Supreme Court of Canada. So that's just some of the things that I keep an eye on over the twenty two years that I am, I'm still involved. But not involved. But you send me petitions, it'll be sent, you send me ideas, it will be sent, it'll be shared. And that is something that we need constructive. Sort of material that a. An ordinary citizen of Ontario can use and throw at the. MPP's door.
Great. Thank you Jay, those are some interesting ideas and what I think we're keeping keeping a track of them, Will Amina. And and thank you especially Jay for the the land acknowledgement, my apologies for omitting that at the beginning, Will Amina? Sorry, Will Amina, I think you're on, you're on mute still.
Sometimes it's the facilitator that unmutes you, so I was counting on that. I'm a former teacher and administrator with the school board. And also I was involved with the union at one time, this is president of the union right around the time of the Mike Eris years. When a lot of this stuff started, but with the retired teachers of Ontario, we have joined with a lot of geriatric. Lobby groups and healthcare lobby groups for seniors healthcare. And there I know they're they're making kind of a super lobby group to keep going after the government. When you talked about talk approaching your MPP. I will tell you that this MPP is not approachable in Huron Perth, not if it's a. Person that she knows like myself as MVP, not if it's a person that's not voting for her. The only way to get her to pay attention is to get her own conservative people. Coming back and saying, wait a minute, this is not what I voted for. And conservative people have healthcare issues, the same healthcare issues that the rest of us have. So I think what you have to do is find a way to mobilize those people who. They think they want, you know, someone to take care of their money, they want their fiscally conservative, but they're not necessarily in this. You know, let's support the developers, let's support privatization. I'm thinking about things like today, they announced that they're going to get the pharmacist to prescribe drugs. That's a privatization move too, right there, for thirteen different ailments, what if they make a mistake, I mean. And prescribe the wrong thing, they're already giving flu shots and and covid shots and things like that. Things that used to happen through the public health, electrocardiograms and things like that or we have to go all the way to Kitchener. If my husband ever needed an electrocardiogram, my brother in law just recently. Had a pacemaker put in, he has to go all the way to Kitchener from Huron County to have his pacemakers checked. So those are just, you know, those are just a few more things when we're coming up with a list of things that are getting privatized. The problem with overnight ERs in our area where you're talking about bad weather and things like that is. You know, when is, when does a pregnant mom most likely show up in labor? Middle of the night, I I heard saw a few people like Kathy Chambers on here, she could probably attest to that. When is, when does a mom have a sick baby that they just don't know what to do with? They've lost it, it's in the middle of the night, this is when, you know, the fever spikes or whatever. You know, when might you have a cardiac event, you don't have time to go hospital shopping and figure out which hospital. You gotta go to, you have to say, well, I better head straight to Godders where the CAT scan is. And hope I don't have to go to London or Stratford after that. You know, but you gotta, you know, you gotta do it within the hour, you're gonna have a stroke or something like that and get the anti-stroke medicine. You have to get to a CAT scan and you have to, you know, so you're driving miles to get taken care of, so middle of the night is not. It's not safe to to have have the place closed in the middle of the night, we need to keep our small hospitals. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Those were great words, Will Amina, and I hope, I hope you will, will will continue to help us with those sorts of. Thoughts and ideas, very, very important, we have to build our local public hospital, not let the work slip out to. Around the countryside and into the cities, we have to build that and I think your point about the conservatives. The Ontario Health Coalition is nonpartisan. Everybody is welcome if you are committed to defending public hospitals and I think you're absolutely right. That there's a lot of conservatives out there that are a hundred percent supporters of their local public hospital, including the C fourth hospital.
And they're the ones that need to talk to our MPP.
They've spent a lot of time, exactly, they've spent a lot of time building and creating our local hospitals, including the C fourth hospital, it's not just. It's not, you know, just one party or another, there is broad, broad, broad support and I think we do have to. Have to harvest that, so Bob, please.
Thank you, sir, for for letting me speak, I'm, my name is Bob Fisher, I am a municipal councillor. In Huron East and I represent the C fourth ward. And I was wondering if you could. Bring your presentation this evening. Either by Zoom or in person to C fourth council in the near future. So some of my councillors are not as conversant with healthcare as they should be. And I was hoping you could present to C fourth, to Huron East Council. As well as if you're really ambitious, there's nine other ones in Huron County. Either by Zoom or in person. Most of us have the facilities now to. To have Zoom presentations. I know county council does for sure and county council represents. The five hospitals and the sixty five thousand people in Huron County, so if you. If I could give you, I'm not a great computer person, but I could give you my phone number and if you could call me, I could give you the particulars.
A hundred percent, Bob, that that's something we we we, the Health Coalition. Frequently works with with local town and city councils. To promote and defend public healthcare and I think that's something we'd be very pleased to do, I can't say. It'll be, it'll be Angela or myself or Natalie or somebody else from the Health Coalition, but I'm, it's something we would wish to arrange. And maybe, I wonder, Bob, if if Sally. Can you take down Bob's, Bob's number Sally or in the chat or something?
Bob, why don't you email us just so your number isn't. Isn't just public. I can put our email address in the chat and would you be able to? Send emails?
Yeah.
My, my secretary says she has those skills, so. Oh wonderful, and that's, that's a great idea and we we look forward to working with you on that. That important initiative to find, to 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 talk to those local councils.
Thank you very much for doing this tonight and and the other programs you're doing as well, sir, thank you.
Great, thank you. Other comments about about the situation, we're we're especially want to want to hear about what. What can be done, what your experiences are with the local hospital, what your concerns are. What needs to be developed, how we can better protect the 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 local hospital and defend it and build it. So it provides the the sorts of services, the range of services that Will Amina. Was was mentioning and becomes a strong pillar of the local community. Ah, Maureen.
Yeah, Doug, I can't, I can't find my hands, I.
Don't worry about it, I'll keep my eyes peeled for other other signs of of discussion.
I guess the first thing I want to say is that my husband was in the hospital for two months in the spring and I, I can't say anything. But I mean, our hospital was fantastic and he had to go to London and. Everybody was fantastic, so thumbs up to our healthcare system that way, the the workers are, they need to be applauded every day or not, just during COVID. I don't know whether any of you on there remember that we had the the gateway rural health. Center had the health kit program going a few years ago and what it was is that. We invited PSWs to come and we paid for their courses in health kick to become PNs. And in the five years that the health kit ran, we graduated seventy five. To PNs and some of them went on to get their RPMs. And I mean, we did pay for it, it was at nighttime, God love these girls, they would come. Two times a week, take nighttime courses after working their whole day as PSWs. And it was a successful program, but we had a problem getting the money because it's because it was a program and a project. It never made money, the whole idea was not to make money, it was to graduate some more healthcare professionals in. In the community, because we felt that if you graduated people that lived in the community, they'd stay in the community. You know, that because especially if they were maybe had their families here or their husbands had a job or their wife had a job in the community. That that they couldn't move. I mean, and and let's face it, it all takes money to do these things, to pay for these projects and all that, because. I mean, this was back in the nineteen nineties and. I was, oh, I can't even remember the exact dates, it might have been in the two thousands, but. Time goes too darn fast, but it did cost a fair bit of money each year, but they used to have, they used to bring in the students and have a camp. Each summer where the the schools, the kids could come and do a health care camp. And from that camp, I I know about five of those kids that actually became doctors. It kind of just intrigued them and everything. So if like, I mean, we can sit here and complain about what every government has done in the past, I mean, that's great to complain. But it never gets us anywhere, I think if we're gonna, if anybody's gonna do anything, they have to talk about what we can do. As, because I mean, I know there's rules and regulations and what you can donate and how you can put money in and everything, but. I mean, I think getting in touch with Gateway would be. I don't know whether anybody, have you ever talked to like Gwen Deveraux from Gateway? She has some wonderful, she always had some wonderful ideas and they. They do a lot of stuff with healthcare, so. I think we need to start looking at doing projects like that and trying to entice our youth to go into these. And I know that right now, like it's very frustrating because of the hours and the pandemic has really. Really made it difficult for everybody, but I mean, we can keep complaining about that, but that ain't, that isn't gonna change the problem. You know, it's no sense complaining, if you, you know, something's gonna be done and and I think talking to somebody like the Gateway Rule. Health is, would be a good step for the Ontario Coalition, because they might have some ideas. That's, you know, I don't know. It's, it's hard to get the young people into. These jobs because a lot of them don't want to work weekends and, you know, so we have to. Try to figure out how to make it that it is a job that's something to be proud of, to be and to do that job.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, Maureen, Tricia.
So I can speak a little, I work at the C fourth emergency department, I've worked for the HPHA for the last eleven years and I've been a nurse for nineteen years. Working in a rural site's way different than working in a bigger center. Stratford Emergency Department, C fourth emergency department has two RNs on, so two on days and two on nights. So whenever a patient comes into the emergency department who needs a transfer, who's had a heart attack, who's had a stroke. Something major that patient has to go to a bigger center that's obviously like more specialized to that need. That nurse has to go with that patient in the ambulance to that bigger center. That leaves one nurse by themselves in the emergency department where another trauma could easily and very quickly come in. So what we do, we don't have people on call, we go through our list of our, the ten nurses that we have that work there. And we call and we beg and we ask. Right now, in C fourth, we have two vacant full timelines, there's four vacant part timelines. And we just can't get people to come into these jobs because there's not enough support that they feel comfortable working in a rural site. Because you need to know everything. I did a course today on resuscitate, resuscitating babies, we don't do babies in C fourth. We don't like to do babies in C fourth, but we need to know how to resuscitate them if something comes in and if something goes wrong and it's a lot of pressure to put on people. Coming out of school, so we can't really have new grads in the emerge. We need to find ways to bring in experienced staff. One of the things that we've approached management and human resources about is having a third nurse on. Especially days when your volume is higher, when you have more transfers, that kind of thing, but again, those things all cost money and it's not in the budget. Courses for an emerge nurse cost about eighteen hundred dollars a year that the hospital doesn't pay for, they don't pay for your time or anything like that. So that's another way communities can help kind of bring things in. The Clinton Hospital Foundation has a great program set up, an education fund for all of the staff in Clinton. You just apply to it, you do your course, you send them your completion, that kind of thing and they cover your course. It's a great way to get those nurses coming. Into the community, especially because we do have nurses that live in our community that work in London. And sometimes they want to come back, but they don't want to give up their seniority, it's really hard being a nurse right now. So I did drop from full time to part time within the last year because as a full time nurse, I wasn't getting days off and haven't had. Time off in four years. I had three hundred and fifty hours in my vacation bank that tried to use, couldn't use anything. So I went part time, they paid the whole thing out. Because I just couldn't take a day off, so people aren't crying for full time, it's not that there's not enough full time jobs being offered. The full timers want days off and can't get them, so it's a really, really hard balance right now. And it's a very stressed working group that's there. Those are just some of the challenges that we see on like a daily basis, there's obviously lots of other things that go around it otherwise. But definitely things that the community can do to help is like approach the foundation, approach the MPPs, have these courses. More incentives from the government or whatever, so that these things can be covered. That we're not working with agency staff because we do have agencies in C fourth. Almost say like thirty percent of our workforce right now for nurses is agency staff. Who you're working alongside with, who have no ties to the community and they're getting paid double what everybody else is and they don't care. As not always, like I'm generalizing here, but when you come to the emerge and you know somebody, it's nice to see that friendly face, that neighbor, that person you see in the grocery store. It's not always the same when you have somebody on who's not from the area either. And that's all I really have to say, that's my little spiel, it's a great hospital, I love working there, I love the whole group. Um, and that's all I really have to say. That's my little spiel. It's a great hospital. I love working there. I love the whole group that's there. And it's really a wonderful place to work and I wouldn't want to see it closed or gone or have more shutdowns if we don't have to.
Really interesting, Tricia. Thank you so much for, for that information. Maybe I might just turn it to Angela because of the obvious connection here.
Tricia, thank you so much for telling your story. This is the reality of what's happening in the Huron Perth Health Lines. It really is something that I think Tricia really just hit the nail right on the head. This is what your community has. They're the most fabulous people providing care in your hospital. The most dedicated people providing care in your hospital. But when we have these staffing issues that we are not being recognized by the government as being a crisis, that's a concern. And you know, the ability to stay in her community, in your community is huge. One of the things I did here, one of the recent town halls I did in Chesley was, um, that's the agency nurses that are coming there were being paid a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. It's being charged back to our system. And then provided somewhere to live. And because they were generally from the GTA and not familiar with the, not comfortable with the driving in the weather conditions that you sometimes encounter up in your neck of the woods. Were asking the staff to go and pick them up at the hotel where they were staying. This is insane. Instead of trying to keep the people that they have there. So it's, it's really something I, I want to thank Tricia for telling her story because that really is the reality of what our nurses are facing every single day, every single day.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, other comments? I see Tambrey in the, in the, in the chat has raised the, the, the fact that uh, the Avon Maitland District School Board is about to graduate the first PSW students. She's one of them. Congratulations, Tambrey. Uh, and uh, that may help alleviate that aspect of the staffing pressures that we, we happen to see here. Clearly, uh, there, I mean, uh, the, uh, the agency staffing model is a, is a problem. Uh, very super expensive form of privatization. You cannot blame the staff who, who work in that system, especially when they have to deal with the sort of issues that, that Tricia was, was mentioning. But it, it does seem to me to be a, a clear way that, uh, you know, one way that, um, that this sort of privatization that is, that has gripped our, our system is not helping, is driving up costs. Um, and is not leading to the sort of staffing that, that I think can ultimately solve uh, the, the problems that we're facing in, uh, in, in our, in our hospitals and especially in our small and rural hospitals. Willamina, back to you. I would, I would, uh, unmute you if I knew how, Willamina.
Hi, I was just thinking that about the nurses and doctors. And for a long, long time, I thought we needed to allow people who come from other countries to be able to, um, you know, to practice in this country as long as they can communicate with their patients. And, and understand, you know, what, um, you know, the system we live in, in the, in the, uh, the way that you treat people in this country or what, you know, that they, they had some kind of emotional intelligence around being here and also were able to communicate. And I think it would really be important to somehow develop some kind of a mentorship program where doctors who are being, uh, coming in from other countries uh, could be mentored by doctors in the system so that we could maybe bring some um, to our area. And I know there are many, many doctors that are, that are recognized from other countries that that have very strong medical system, but there are other places like for instance, Syria. I, they, they have a fairly, had a fairly good medical system there too. So uh, why not? Uh, some, I'm sure there are some Syrian refugees around that might be qualified to help out, um, or Afghan, or sorry, um, what's the country? Ukraine. Um, there may be people who, who could be trained, but they will need some kind of mentoring, I would think. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you, Willamina. And I'd just like to note in the chat, Nancy Craig asked, could a different schedule help in Calgary paramedics and EMT do four days on and four days off? Interesting question.
There is lots of innovative scheduling that is out there that is similar to that. The problem is, is that on their days off, they're being called into work because they're so short-staffed. So they're never getting those four days off. I, I've been told and I've, I've spoken to nurses who tell me they've worked twenty-four hour shifts because there was just no one to relieve them. That's not sustainable. That's absolutely not sustainable.
A hundred percent. Uh, Jay?
You talk about scheduling. I, I've been through that. I've done it. Uh, this, this problem started after the Harisites removed eight thousand nurses in ninety-five, ninety-six. That's when we started going down the tubes. The conservatives, then the liberals, and then conservatives again and again. The whole problem here is the unions got sucker punched by this government in the last election. If you look around who voted him in, those are the ones who are to answer for what happens to our healthcare system. Healthcare, education, and the everyday worker in the retail stores. You've talked about somebody, uh, going to do farmer care and the pharmacist is going to prescribe. Do you know that there's a lobby group from Loblaw who owns Shoppers Drug Mart? So Bees who owns, uh, the other major chain of pharmacies. They're all talking to the government and getting business. Now we on our side, from labor side, from the coalition side, we have to put out that agenda out there, the, the, the needs of the community. And the community must be riled to write and petition their MPPs. That's the only way. You can talk to your neighbor, your friends and whoever thinks like you. You cannot convert them because they voted and they put the person in. Now to unravel that. The latest, I just got a memo there from, uh, CTV News that the government is going to appeal the, uh, court's ruling. Which we obviously knew it would happen. He's waiting at wasting our money. So I got some figures of the amount of money that comes to the, to the province from the government. And even during the pandemic, billions of dollars were spent. Where's all that money? That is what he's saving and he's farming it out. He's giving it to his friends and contacts. Those who support the Conservative Party. So we have to mobilize and organize the communities to go and question, knock on doors or you do it digitally. Send in emails, just flood the emails to the uh, MPP's offices and let him read. If he doesn't read, send it to, uh, Queen's Park. So that it gets flooded and jammed. That's the only way we can have action. Other than that, we've got all these Band-Aid solutions. It's not gonna solve the burnout. In that big, I, I put out on my chat, I must thank every healthcare worker that worked in the system and still working in the system and tolerating the nonsense that's going on with people who are mismanaging our money. I've been through the healthcare system. I had a quadruple bypass at Credit Valley Hospital, at Trillium Hospital. And what a service, what, uh, what, uh, your care that I got. I was proud of the nurses that did the job. I thanked every one of them. And they knew where I came from, not that they, because of where I was from, that they're giving me special treatment. They treated all the, uh, heart patients with the same care and loving care. So having said that, we have to mobilize and start telling the story. You have to bring the figures up, bring it forward. I've got quite a few, you know, uh, savings on my in a computer that I can share with the Coalition, which was written by a bureaucrat who was the Davis Government. And you might have, might know him, Angela Ted Ball. He used to be with, uh, Bill Davis and then he was Larry Grossman's Special Assistant. Today he's writing splendid work. Uh, I can share all that because that I sent. When I get it, I send it out and share it. So we have to, uh, sort of educate the community now. Or re-educate them in light of what is happening with the healthcare system. It's not gonna stop. It's getting worse before it gets better. And until we, as a community, don't wake up, it's gonna go down the tubes. And you know what happened in the United Kingdom? And you know what happened in other parts of the world? We don't want to go in that fashion. We've got a, a, a really wonderful healthcare system, but in my humble opinion or angered opinion is it's mismanaged. It's top-heavy and the people at the bottom are not reaping the benefits. There's enough money there. There's, uh, the figures are seventy-five billion dollars that comes yearly from the coffers from the federal government. So we need good management and it has to be micro-managed so that it filters down instead of going up.
Great, thank you, Jay, and to Elizabeth.
Hi, Elizabeth from Opsu Local one six nine, uh, which is HPA. Um, I think it really is just picking up on what Jay was talking about in terms of education. Just attended Opsu's Lobby Day at Queen's Park at the beginning of November. And I think it's interesting, if we look at Huron and Perth counties specifically, that typically, um, both of those counties vote conservatively. And we've seen that historically. And so now we have two counties where, you know, they vote conservatively, but now they're facing these crunches with their healthcare system. And I don't know that there's that connection between how they're voting and what it's resulting in. So I think just the population in general needs to be educated more about, um, you know, the way they vote and the outcome of the way they vote.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, okay, so we've had a, a good chance to, to talk. Again, we do want to encourage people, uh, to let, let me know or let, let Sally know, uh, if you are interested in continuing to work and building support, uh, for, uh, the public hospital, uh, in C fourth. Um, we are very concerned. The five, uh, major trade unions in healthcare, uh, were at Queen's Park, I believe, last week. Uh, we found out later that day that while the unions were there asking to meet with the government to talk about these, these staffing issues that, uh, that the Health Minister Sylvia Jones was actually meeting with, uh, with a, a group organized to discuss how to privatize our hospital system. Uh, this is very serious. There has been a long series of problems, uh, with these, uh, with these sort of private mini hospitals, like stretched back to two thousand um, and seven, when a, a patient bled out. Uh, there's no emergency room, patient bled out. A young woman, uh, was getting plastic surgery, not from a, a surgeon, but from a, a family physician. After all of these years of struggle over this issue, we still don't have proper oversight of these, uh, uh, these mini hospitals. Um, uh, instead, all we get is one word reports, pass or fail from the College of Physicians. That's not adequate. We need a much more public and transparent system. Um, we need a, a system that is accountable, not one that, that feeds off of, of, uh, off of, uh, keeping secrets, not, not transferring best practices and, uh, and, and hoarding this, uh, the, the staff. We need to build our public hospitals and especially in the small rural and northern communities. We can't let that, the, the precious staffing resources that we need to build those facilities, uh, go elsewhere, be tempted to go elsewhere to a more uh, manageable workload rather than the, the, the crisis that currently exists in our hospitals. We need to build those hospitals. We need to focus our government's attention on building a, a place of, of work that is, that is a, a good work site, not one that you feel you have to, as we heard from, uh, uh, tonight. Uh, you have to go work part-time just because the stresses and strains and the demands on you are so awful. Um, uh, there is, I see one last person, uh, who hasn't spoken. Maybe there's another. Uh, I guess we can go on a little bit longer. We're going on for just over an hour now. Uh, so I'll just turn it to, uh, to Joyce Ritter before we, um, we, we perhaps move to, to wrapping up. Uh, and again, I just send a, a little message to myself or Sally if you are, are, uh, if you can find, think you might be, want to discuss further, uh, about how to build uh, the defense of our public hospitals in C fourth. Joyce?
Hi, um, I just think that at this point in, um, where we are with COVID, that um, we should be pushing more for to get the nurses that were fired, um, for not getting the vaccine. If they're so short on nurses, why are those nurses not back to work?
Okay, thank you, Joyce. Uh, that's certainly, uh, an issue of, of, of much, of much discussion. Um, do I, do I see, uh, other, uh, uh, and, and, and many grievances too? I will add, uh, is there any other, uh, any other, uh, comments from the, the floor? Is there anything that people would want to say as a, as a last thought? Uh, can I ask Angela if she has a last thought?
Thank you very much for having me and, uh, hearing a fruitful discussion here tonight. It was very fulsome and, and very informative and on people's positions. I want to express to you all, please fight for your communities. Please fight for your community hospitals. This is very, very important to your community. And you know, anything you can do, I've put a, um, the, uh, link in from the Ontario Nurses Association about, uh, sending in your petition letter to, to HPA. It's, uh, www.on a dot org front slash HPA. And I would encourage you all to write to your MPPs. Keep going with the pressure to your municipalities and keep going to the pressure with um, any public information that you can get out there. It's really important. We need public behind all of the healthcare workers and the hospitals and ensuring that your community stays uh, safe with their, your hospital. So thank you very much for everything. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Angela. And thank you, uh, to everyone for coming out. This is a, 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 a good turnout. It was very interesting to hear uh, your voices and concerns. We look forward to working with you, uh, in the future. Sally, is there anything else we need to touch upon before we break?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you very much. All right, everybody. Have a, a safe night and we'll, we'll be in touch soon. Take care.